So July. Six oh two. This council meeting to order. Go call please.
That's number Laritson.
Here.
Mayor Phil Green.
Here.
Councilmember Hill is absent. Councilmember. I can see you from Councilmember Hill. Next member Thomas.
Here.
And Councilmember Grant is asked.
Okay. Then we have the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or additions? Anyone? What did I do?
Correct.
Excellent. Housekeeping matters. Um. What all in favor, we say on each side. I'm going to move down your seat just whispering. Any opposed? All in favor? Um, housekeeping matters. Well, I have one. Um, one is that the question of saying a pledge came up last meeting and a few opinions were were placed. Um, I recall that when the pandemic happened and we were all thrown into remount status, that we dropped the pledge because we were just trying too hard to learn Zoom courtesies and not interrupting each other to try to figure out how to do something like that together. And when we came back over a year later in person, it was, um, it was just sort of dropped out of, uh, as an oversight. And when we brought it up again, people decided not to continue with that. But I think it's worth putting on our agenda in one of the coming meetings to just have an open discussion with council about how we want to proceed, if that's the will of this body. That's all I.
Discussion.
Well, so that was the question. I think we just today discussed putting it on the agenda for the next meeting as a discussion item, if that's agreeable to everybody?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Notting. Okay.
Okay. Any other housekeeping matters? All right then. Moving on. Public comments about items not on the agenda.
I have one. Sorry, housekeeping matter. If I leave because I have a cut on the roof of my month and it's probably bleeding. So sorry, I leave in advance. Hasn't been bleeding, but we'll see.
Okay. Thanks for that.
Yeah.
Um. If you hemorrhage, I can.
But you have to get to that state, otherwise they're not going to help you.
Okay, public comments about items not on the agenda. Um, when I call you, please come to the lectern, state your name and address and what you got to say in three minutes. Mr. Presta.
All right. My name is Steve Presta. I prefer to be called P because it reminds me of the many times I've been a coffee guy in my local police in a political manner. Um, that's not projecting my current sheet. Many unpleasant political contacts. Um, like to say, pleasure, allegiance. Pleasure, allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, interior of which stands one of the issues on our, we give this law liberty and justice for all. I think I looked at the message really quickly in the second minutes going by. He said, and I got the idea, I was quoting last, saying something about corporations that pose a lot of problems in the world. I was actually responding to my work, one of my work representatives, Pritkin, when he was, uh, said something about the harm American corporations for providing guns to his country that was killing his government. Uh, and then I talked about the, there was an issue with the baby market, but I don't think I broadly stated all corporations are. Of all the problems in the world, maybe I did. I thought I just kind of made that very little clearer. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
You mean everybody? My name is Justin Pritkin. Actually not from Leno, like any Penrose other than there, working Canyon, I vote for Congressman Ricky Pedersen. I'm here representing Pritkin to inform you of a few things, of course, that we do have the office in Canyon City, uh, open five days a week, but you know, the phone's always off. And to let you know too, there are many services that we are happy to provide on behalf of viewer constituents, whether that's reaching out to federal agencies, um, to, to work on policy discussion or to actually advocate for action play, grant requests, or if you're having a problem with one of those agencies on a topic, we're happy to, uh, to go to them on your behalf as well. To that end, one of the two things I want to touch on briefly, and that'll be agree are the community project funding requests that came out of great county, one from Lake County Housing, and the other is, um, you know, that's what I was saying.
Saint Vincent.
Thank you. Wanted to say Saint Scholastica, which is checking out in Kansas City, recent developments there to Saint Scholastica. Anyway, on the Saint Vincent, there is a, uh, a request in for $579,000 to Community Project Fund. Um, it's the details on all the items that would be forward are escaping me. I don't have those notes, but the last plate for those, the network customers in was in the House of Corporations Committee. It is made in, out of the House Corporations Committee, only underfunded by, I think, like $179, but whatever they decided to run down for that, it's a $579. But it made it up better than some. So it's going on to the next, which will involve conference in the Senate, uh, up to the House Board and go to the Senate for conference. That's, uh, that's good news on part of, of Saint Vincent. On the Lake County Housing, the request out of our office came, rather the request into our office came for 1.7 on 11,000 in Lake County. Um, it came out of the House Corporations Committee of 850,000. So we're going to be working with our Senate partners on bringing that back, bringing that to complete progress in fact, if they want 1.7 as best we can, make sure that, uh, Lake County gets what it needs to address this housing situation. So yeah, um, if you have any questions, we have to answer, but I won't unfortunately be able to stick around until the end of our meeting, because we're trying to met Kansas City. So have you taken any questions you have at this? At none, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
That.
So my name is Julie Rowhan, I feel like I'm Greek one thousand four hundred and I just wanted to stop by and talk about a couple of things. Um, the IDA that the county has produced, putting the city in the camp so we can opt in to draft one, two, three. I would love to get your review on that. So we can add the moon that will affect the pipeline. That's the only thing holding us up is they want that in place for the board.
Jamie, what's your deadline on, like ASAP?
Throughs.
Through, sorry. Okay.
And Chris has a lot of work and he's prepared it and he sends it out. So if you check.
I think I got it yesterday. The reason I ask is that we're a little bit in transition with our city attorney right now and they are a little overwhelmed. So I will ask for as soon as possible.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So that's the one thing I wanted to bring Justin's update because that's super exciting. This is additional funding that we applied for fifteen months back and it's very exciting. So we got a letter from Senator Bennett's office that it was moving forward and I was not the one. Um, certainly we're getting the funding for the, I guess, well, um, potentially. And so that's going to help with that tremendously. That's the other reason I wanted to stop by. I'm not asking for anything now, but I will be coming and asking for more money. We don't know if that's going to be a possibility for you to help us with maybe a subtle amount of other requests. We have a lot happening and everything costs money. Um, we can regedit, they're remaining, our funds, there's been a $772,000 for housing in general, and I don't know how much of that is going to trickle down from the housing authority, but that, uh, we just have a lot of things coming up. We're going to have to add some support staff from me because I can't keep all balls in the air. Um, and that's it. So I'm giving you a big, I'll be coming back in August. And so we're sending through our board tomorrow, our phone, our, Desmond, you know, we have some things a little bit more in the app. So I'm running that forward.
I agree. Thank you. Okay, other public comments on things that are not on the agenda. Anyone want to run? Raise their hand in the way in? All right. Moving on then. We have consent agenda. Our minutes run. It was a late addition to the packet. Here's my. My copy. Well, it was over and. No one has any correction? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Who then looks to approve the consent agenda?
Thomas seconds.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Okay. All in favor now. Moving on to my favorite part of this whole affair, the department reports. City administration.
I didn't know this is your favorite.
It really is.
Would have made more, uh, than more jokes. Um. Okay, so a few things to update you on. A while back, councilmember for Gency raised a question about, um, security at City Hall. And so, so that's something that I've been working on. I wanted to let you know, I work with our HR director and provided information to employees on the upstairs portion of City Hall about how to use their phone as a panic button. If they feel like there's a, you know, person in the building or upstairs or they're having a discussion with somebody and it feels uncomfortable, they can, now everyone knows how to use their phone as a panic button. Uh, and also we have a protocol amongst all the employees on the second floor that if you hear raised voices and that means someone is not happy with what's happening, whether their encounter with a citizen or anybody else. Uh, and so we just go check and see what's going on in their office. We had also had and more formally a visit from the Colorado Information Analysis Center, and I'd like to thank Claire Skeen for helping set this up. But we interviewed Jason McCall, visit us on July 11th, and his role is basically analysis and sort of helping hand to talk through things. So he met with me and our inner chief to talk about our safety concerns in this building, everything. You know, his question was what keeps you up at night? And you know, my, one of my biggest fears about this building is, um, it's old and it could burn down and we have lots of wiring. If you've ever been in the basement. So you know, there's lots of things that we, we worry about with safety concerns throughout the building. I worry about the safety, of course, of the employees as well. We've been working towards that. Uh, so we are going to be looking at some training, um, for our employees, especially how to deal. And it's an uncomfortable subject, but, um, an active shooter situation. And it is a very, very uncomfortable training to sit through. I sat through it a number of times, but our inner chief is willing to do that for our employees. And, uh, and then some infrastructure measures. We have some cameras upstairs that I don't even know where they feed to. So again, there's a lot of work to be done. And so I wanted to tell you, I took the, you know, concerns seriously and we're working on them. There are some short-term measures that we've taken and some longer-term measures that we'd also like to take. So, um, that was actually great. And the Colorado Information Analysis Center, it's pronounced KIAK if you want to use the acronym. No, all that was free of charge to us. They did that, um, because that's one of the roles they perform. So it was really helpful. So that relationship isn't over. We'll continue to work with them on some of the ideas that we have. Um, Parklet update. Uh, I got a phone call from Camp, former councilmember for Gency that he's happy the concrete is being expanded. Um, we had some discussions about that to expand the ramp. It was ADA compliant, but it really didn't look like it was. Uh, it really didn't, but it actually was at any rate, we have just decided to expand everything on foot. Um, so that, as you can see, I think they were laying out the, um, the framing for that con, the concrete issue is that we just can't get concrete. So, um, as soon as we can get that, we'll get that done. So the toilets are flushing and I think we are close to a certificate of occupancy on that. Uh, salary assessment. I think you all remember that I really wanted to get a salary assessment done for last year's budget process and that didn't exactly happen as I planned. I want to thank Erin because she has been, um, working really hard on this. We got three quotes from three different companies for a salary assessment. Um, and we have selected the Lee and Burgess. They are the ones who did the one for Salida. Um, they certainly were not the most expensive. I think they were a third of the cost of the most expensive one, but provided much more service than the least expensive one. So they were kind of like median, the median porridge selection. So they're, they're going to be great. Uh, so we are going to get them going on that as soon as possible. A couple of things I wanted to thank the police department personally. There was a barricade incident, uh, last week and the chief will brief you on that, but, uh, that was a fantastic job by the police department, um, sheriff's department, EMS, fire, uh, CHF SWAT. That was, the outcome could not have been better. And it could have been worse. I mean, that certainly was a very tense situation. So the chief will brief you a little bit more on that. If you don't know, he'll give you the details on what happened last week. Um, I wanted to say we had a staff meeting with the police department last week or yesterday, and, um, they would love for you all to do a ride along if you have any interest. So there is another invitation out to each of the council members to do a ride along. Um, the department would love that. And then, um, as far as the police chief selection, I did mention in the last meeting, I think that I'm going to make this last call for interest in being on the committee. So I think a couple of you've mentioned names of people who would like to be on the committee or you'd like to be on the committee. Um, please let me know. Um, speaking of committees, there is a committee, I think of two now for us to do the selection for city attorney. Uh, councilmember Thomas has indicated that she wants to be involved in those interviews. The RFP closed on July, uh, seven, and we received four different requests, responses from four different law firms. I've talked to, um, Linda and Evan, um, our current city attorneys about that. We've gotten, we've received some great applications. So I sent those off to Linda and Evan for them to give me their input and we're hoping to schedule interviews probably in the next week or two, so that we can have a selection for you by the second meeting in August. Um, and the last thing I wanted to do is, um, I wanted to acknowledge Donna. She, um, her last day, um, was the seventh, and I just wanted to acknowledge her and thank her for her dedication and work for the city. We could not all be here today without her work and her knowledge, institutional knowledge. Uh, she has agreed to continue to help us out and get through, you know, learning everything she knows. I think it will take a long time for her to pass on institutional knowledge, but I really personally wanted to thank her. Uh, she was instrumental when I first started and helping me understand everything and just being an amazing partner and a right-hand person throughout all this. So, um, I wanted to thank her for that. And, um, you know, I wanted to also thank, um, Cheryl Maroney, who signed up to be an administrative assistant and she successfully submitted payroll last week all by herself. And so she's learning accounts payable and getting up to speed on some other things. We, um, I have a call set up with a, um, outside firm who will help us host the vacant position that we have for the finance director. So helping us push out the word for that, like we did with some of the prior positions. So lots of things going on.
That just takes my breath away. Any questions for the administrator? Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Human. Thank you. Can we restart the?
Good evening. We had our chance audit a week ago. And that audit was for the previous year's point twenty-two. There were a few things that we did not get accomplished last year, but we are already well into getting all our trainings and things that have been broken in the meeting there and done. I would say was probably about ninety percent done for the, to get ready for next year's audit. So hoping that we can lower our insurance rates.
Yeah, I want to thank Erin. She took the checklist from the prior year and went down it and just knocked everything off and, you know, got in place to do their trainings, got a handful of things cleaned up and I, you know, issues, you know, maybe sort of like OSHA issues identified. And then we found out the audit was for 2022. And everything we have done is for 2023. So our audit is, it is what it is, but there's notations on everything noting that we have already accomplished those things for 2023. So, um, it's great. It's something that we've wanted to do for a long time and we just, um, there's only so many hours in the day. So we appreciate Erin being here and encouraging, cajoling, handholding, uh, all the employees through their training. Some of us require more cajoling. So yes, anyway, thank you.
Okay. Questions for Erin? Okay, thank you. Police chief.
Hey, folks, and councilmembers, good evening. Um, I have a few things to go through in hindsight. I hope you'll please be patient. First, I want to start with the situation the administrator talked about last week. And I'll read briefly from the press statement we put out in going to the board. On July 11, 2023, 11:07 PM, Lake County Dispatch received a reported burglary progress call located in the 200 block of East Eighth Street in Leno. A Leno police officer allegedly showed that he responded to the scene immediately. The reporting party was the homeowners. They were located in Colorado Springs because they rented the housing back. But they were able to give an on course of information on location of the subject in the residence and a picture of the subject by a home surveillance system they had there. From that picture of officers responding, we were able to determine that the suspect had armed himself with a firearm inside the home. At that point, the situation turned into an armed barricaded situation. I was called out from home and responded to the scene immediately, uh, readjusted the perimeter of all the officers involved, determined it was a pure tactical situation, and made a request when the sheriff back and arrived, we'll do the request with Chappy County Sheriff, combined SWAT team to respond to. A situation like this with an armed individual in a house that's barricaded is extremely dangerous, not only to the residents of the area, but for the on course officers to respond. It requires a very formal, tactical, methodical approach to resolve this situation in a very safe manner. The Chief of County, the combined SWAT team came up for Chief of County. Uh, the sheriff of Chief County responded as well as police chief in Salida because their only members on that team. Once they were there, uh, they conducted pre-prep operations and at a point when they were ready to conduct, I turned over instant command to the Chief of County SWAT commander. At that point, they did a progressive amount of, um, callouts on PA speakers. They detonated some flashbangs on the outside of the home to gain the attention of the suspect and eventually had it ratcheted up to introduce tear gas into the home to force the suspect to come out. Making entry into a home with an armed suspect is extremely dangerous to responding officers because the person's in there and they're able to secrete themselves, put themselves at a disadvantage in walls and furniture. It's extremely dangerous bringing it coming in. After numerous introductions of tear gas and munitions into the home, the suspect exited out the rear of the home and was safely taken into custody. It was unearned at the time. Uh, he was later identified as a Rico Archie Leada, adult male, drunk left of. Uh, he was immediately taken through medical examination of the scene and taken to the hospital for further examination. Once he was there, there, he was taken to Lake County Sheriff's Office. Uh, the homeowners were extremely pleased and grateful for the response. It was unfortunate that the entire neighborhood along Eighth and Seventh Streets were, uh, affected that night. Uh, when I got there originally, judging the scene as it was, it was an effective hit, many hours result. I gave instructions to the Lake County Dispatch to send a reverse emergency message to the area along Eighth and Seventh, notify the residents. There was a tactical situation, able to shelter in place, remain there, go through windows, change everything until the situation resulted. Once it was safe, party was in custody, we sent another note to the neighborhood to again advise them that it was safe. The shelter in place was now terminated and then go back to normal. That's necessary because people were coming to the windows and looking outside and we just wanted to make sure that we're just injured in case there's shots fired. A situation like this can end in very different manners. Officers are injured or shot, suspects are injured or shot, flash banners. In this situation, no one was hurt and no force was utilized by any man. So it's a very successful result for an incident that happened here in Leno. It was, uh, through the use of our partners and cooperation of our partners, Lake County Sheriff, thought was fire department, EMS, and agencies down the street from us in Lake County, Chief of County. So very happy about how the outcome turned out. Later on, throughout the night, I was keeping the city administrator warmed on text messages. She too had a sleepless night and, um, very, very happy with the resolution at the end of this. One of the factors that I think has helped out with this resolution is the fact that the Bay County Sheriff's Office and the Leno Police Department working extremely well together. This was a joint operation, had to be done so, having enough personally time with him. So really grateful for that piece. Um, as in all cases, all people are innocent until proven guilty by a court of law. And the one thing that was kind of a neat byproduct of this is I think we're all aware of a very well-named Facebook page here in Leno. And there was postings on that page all throughout the night, but at the end of the situation, there were any negative comments about the post from, which I focus the new pair that I'm moving forward. So that was something we were extremely pleased about and the focus was more on suspect being attacked than anyone. So, for the good. Before we do, any questions on that situation?
I have one. You know, you mentioned that the, that the police department, sheriff's department working closely together. Is this under the guidance of the IDA that was passed earlier?
Yes.
And how have you found that to be adequate, working smoothly and efficiently?
Yes.
Okay.
It is starting from informal to very formal, but it has to work at the informal level alongside that very formal situation. Yeah. Any other questions on that? Okay. Uh, moving on. Uh, last night we had an incident with, uh, a couple of young people spending buildings in the parking lot of the new, the East parking lot of the high school, just had the asphalt changed and resurfaced and repainted. A couple of young men decided to go down there, do nothing to these parking lot. Luckily, we had a resident that called it in immediately. We responded and we caught two vehicles over at the community park. They got citations. One vehicle was towed. Their parents were called and they came to responsibility of their, uh, sons and took them on. The school district was notified, city administrator was notified as well, uh, and, uh, looking and seeing if they're going to press charges at all for any kind of criminalistic damage. So it's more so barking up the brand new pain. So we'll get a termination of that soon, but that was handed immediately. I thought I said that our officers are conducting more traffic stops. I thought I'd say that our officers are conducting more traffic stops around town. And in doing so, the, the purpose is to get people to comply with the traffic law and not just purely providing tickets. And many times, it, the end of the season is only. Today I, I stopped four off-road motorcyclists on Harrison. They were coming north on Harrison as I was going south. Said, hey, you can't, you can't drive on Harrison, you're an off-road unauthorized vehicle. Well, we're not a town, gotta understand that, cross over, get out the street quickly, understand. They complied and it's like, and that's the whole purpose is to get people to comply. Sometimes a warning is sufficient, sometimes citations like in last night's incident are called for industry and very well known. So, but I thought I'd say we're getting a lot more traffic stops. Uh, next to last, uh, boom days, we're working on that. We're planning on getting that tomorrow. One of the things that I noticed since I've been here is the issue with parking across the city, Quebec, that's all speaking. And knowing that we're having a lot of people coming boom days and then after that, the hundred bike, the hundred race, is maybe utilization of some available parking lots here in the city that might take some of that stress off the neighborhood residential park. Uh, I contacted the church up here at Seven and Butler. They consider, they might consider, you know, renting out their spots, getting charging people and making some money for the church. Uh, you also have that big parking lot to the north of the mining museum, right there by the Ice Palace, that park, it could be utilized. And some other places, they're gonna be shuttle parking for the community park as well. But, you know, I know residents get really upset sometimes. They wanna park near or part of their homes. Uh, and they're unable to because of huge influx of people coming here. So we can look at other possibilities, I think, that would alleviate some of that pressure on the residents and making easier for everybody to cross the board. And could even provide some extra funds for some businesses and, and like. Uh, I don't comment, I'll echo the same thing that the, uh, city administrator said, I would invite any and all members of city council to come ride with an officer for a few hours at a time to understand this job and truly be an appreciation. You can ride with me, you can ride with one of the other officers, whoever you wish, or a female, and get a perspective of what we do with data basis. Sometimes you have to step into somebody else's shoes to ever really understand their job. You might think you know what it is based on T V or movies or things or hearsay, but then when you really go to that and spend some time with them and really understand their perspectives and challenges and, and identify they think and what they think. So I would publicly want to express our, my invitation to all of you to, anytime you are lying, please let me know. Be glad to help you. Any, any questions?
Questions for the chief? Thank you, that was a very cool report. I've done it right along before, uh, when I worked for shelters on the front range and I, I would totally encourage everybody to do it. And informed it. Okay. Fire party.
Need with everybody? Uh, good news on station two, finally have a certificate of occupancy. Yes, yes. Uh, now it's not completely formalized, but we have it. Uh, it's just on paper writing, uh, or in writing form yet. Uh, so we are moving in appropriately to have, uh, some residents start building in all their stuff and putting all the, you know, washing your jars, opening all those up, all the equipment and everything that we got from donations and everything. So we're just kind of getting it functional right now. Our anticipated time for grand opening is probably September fifteenth. But, um, as we, you know, actually make that a final date, I'll be sure to let everybody know and we'll get it out on social media and everywhere we need to for the general public to come and, uh, to celebrate our, our joyous case because it's been a long time coming and I'm really thankful for it. So, uh, let's see. The Headlock Street Center, uh, H T C, we're doing more build out, out there for the next coming fire academy. Uh, the, the academy is actually gonna start earlier this year and we decided to do that because we kind of just get into the winter months. Uh, you know, in November, December, they're a little tough. So we, we want to be able to do some things prior to that winter coming and hitting us. Um, but we are building out some, some more burn rooms, et cetera, out there. Um, the type one Spartan, we did a walk around virtually on that piece of equipment the other day. There's a very short list to be able to complete that apparatus. So it'll be coming here pretty soon, which is another exciting, um, thing for our community. And the anticipated date to go out there is August seventh. But again, we have, I need to talk to a couple of my apparatus coordinators and see if that's possible to include our fleet services guy over in Keystone and make sure he can come up for your finals though. But we'll be hopeful for that. Right now with the safer and the two A, two A G grants and doing the five twenty-five financial reports and I did give Donna prior to her departure and I got some statistics from her, I may need some more. Um, while I'm doing that and also all three quarter reports on that. And those are for the fourth person on the engine company, the bunker gear and the, um, the plum event system that was installed at a station two. Uh, currently right now, the E nine one one board is trying to get finalized and sit our chair positions. This is the board that will, um, basically oversee dispatching, um, separates itself from the sheriff's department. And we're currently doing, uh, we're working through that process. We had a meeting with the hospital board the other day and they just have some table language to be added to the intergovernment agreement. So because of that, you'll probably see that intergovernment agreement again for another, um, decision to be made on that. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Uh, currently we'll have five people moving into the station. Our residents will be moving out of the residency quarters over here after, over Capitol Hill. And I'll do a walkthrough with the homeowner over there and make sure that we're gonna leave that home properly. Um, B ship engine company performed CPR on one of our citizens and saved their lives. Um, that's a wonderful job done for firing your mess. Um, and we extinguished, we extinguished five, ten fires, uh, this month, uh, structural. There was an outbuilding and also a lot of rough fires, uh, it's starting to get really dry out there. So we've been able to get on those before they get, um, um, anything devastating. So it's good that, and we've been able to split the crew. And I think this is really important to understand because of the hiring of the fourth of the safer grant currently right now and also being able to supplement with our resident reserve program. What we're able to do is we're able to bring greater equipment and apparatus to scene to be able to get on those fires, um, more efficiently and more effectively. So we've been able to just to stop those out, if you will, which is great. We're in the process of hiring one female in a resident reserve program. Uh, the online fire academy training system, we went into this program for online services for our training. So what we can do now is it'll, it'll give us like a lot of templates and, and so forth to be able to utilize online and then be able to take that and, and apply it out in the field. We go do hands-on training based on the ideas and everything that we're getting from that, uh, the fire academy is what it's called. Uh, so the type three engine went on its first wildland deployment to spring pre-fire. Um, and so the type six engine, just like no, so the, the money's great that we get from, from those deployments. But i- in my opinion, the greatest asset that we get from going on those deployments is the experience that we get in order to be able to fight our local fires. It gives us everything that we need to be able to handle our own situations, which is the number one top, uh, reason why we'd love to be able to deploy. And there's many reasons why, um, that we do that. Uh, not only just the fact that we're firefighters and we love to go fight fire, uh, but, um, it does bring in that revenue. So the type three engine, just to give you somewhat of an example, the type six used to make about fourteen on the four, fourteen thousand on the fourteen day um, turn, uh, the, the type six makes about thirty, thirty thousand in that fourteen year, fourteen day turn. So, um, so that will go into the firefighting balance for whatever we need to use it for to supplement our budget. Uh, six, uh, department members recertified on state qualifications and two, uh, two of the, uh, department members got new state qualifications, so that's great. And five personnel went over to Gunnison for world-class firefighting training at no cost. Um, it, you know, pays to have great relationships and, um, Chief Hugo over there invited us over and, you know, there was people from, uh, the east coast and, uh, like fire department training network out in Indiana that came and actually instructed in their training facility that's also made out of train, uh, shipping containers. And it was just, it was world-class training at no cost to us, so that was wonderful. And then we continue to work on mitigation efforts as we can, um, working with the Forest Health Council here for Lake County. And also, uh, we're starting to have more and more of those types of, um, conversations to what we can do for mitigation efforts. So, uh, if there's, if this, I don't really have anything else unless you have any questions.
Okay. Um, the brush fires, were they human?
So just, um, we believe one was out, uh, we believe one was out in, um, um, Hattaway Camp House site area. And another one, like on twenty-four, there was a piece of siding that came from the other side of the highway that went up, hit the electrical line and threw a bunch of sparks everywhere. So, um, yeah. So, so, yes and no.
So when will the fire bands start? Yes.
Soon, soon. Thousand R fuels are seven percent. Uh, normally we, you know, there's, there's certain criteria that Forest Service follows and we follow in suit. There's about five criteria that we go into. If we meet about three out of those five, then we'll go into a, a fire ban. And, and one of those is, you know, a thousand R fuels being under ten percent. So, so we're, we're, we're starting to hit that, uh, that criteria now. So I would, I would anticipate a fire ban here pretty soon.
Okay. Uh, any questions or comments?
Council member, tell us.
Council member Thomas.
Uh, yes, thank you. I didn't really have a question. I just wanted to offer my congratulations for what appears to be a very successful grant writing program for the fire department and then also being able to take advantage of the, um, training that you're able to send five officers to at no cost. I think it's great for the community and great for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chief Daley is a master at, um, identifying outside resources to use for our benefit.
I like to do it.
Any other comments?
I, I have one, I just want to thank the fire department. Uh, they, while Chief Daley is dealing with brush fire, uh, you were also dealing with plumbing issue. And so I want to thank the department for going without water, um, for several days while we fixed a dashing pipe from the ceiling in station one. Uh, the shocker was the initial quote we got was, uh, seventeen thousand dollars to fix it, which is a little bit of a gut punch. Uh, we made a calculated call to send that group back to Denver and get a second quote, um, which meant that the firefighters would have to go a couple of days without water until we could get the second quote. And the second quote came in at seventeen hundred bucks.
Three thousand.
Three, three thousand total. So it was, it was a, it was a good call, but I, it meant that they were using the bathroom here and showering at station two. So I just want to thank you for doing that.
For sure. And it was local, uh, uh, contractors, so I'm glad that they went to that person and they also found some other things and that's why I'm back.
All right.
Wow.
So anyway, that was a, we have older buildings, um, that, that was, I appreciate y'all toughening it out for a little bit.
For sure.
Sounds like a logistical challenge.
Yeah. Well, it was a tough call because we have the company from Denver right there and they were ready to fix it for seventeen thousand dollars and we wait till Thursday and get a second quote. And knowing they'd be without water for a couple of days and not knowing if the second quote will come in higher. But we rolled the dice and, so, um, I appreciate your patience, so really we're done.
Uh, I would like to offer my congratulations to B ship, uh, engine company, out of hospital arrests or nobody's start to a great day. So really awesome that, uh, we had a good outcome.
I will pass that along, please.
Any other comments? Okay. Wow, well, this so far has been a whole bunch of really positive and optimistic news, not to put pressure on the remaining departments, but much streets. You know? Okay.
Uh, we'll start out with, um, it's been a very fast market this month, uh, the short uh, kind of period that the organ on my crew, we were eating and crew between vacations and out on medical. And we still accomplished quite a bit for the month. Uh, just read off some of the things that we, we got done. Uh, we did the prep for Seventh Street, um, East Seven for the gaming, which that's in place right now. In fact, uh, Martine is here in town.
That is not.
Um, Martine is in town right now with patches and he will start that first thing in.
Yeah.
Yeah. So all the, uh, final grading was supposed to be done today, so we can pay tomorrow. So that will be taken care of tomorrow. Uh, he's got a bunch of other patches to keep, uh, doing as well, but he did plan for tomorrow for Seventh Street. Uh, we have been doing all the painting and of the curves. We have all the yellow zones and today they completed all the handicap runs, uh, curbing. So it is now all yellow and blue markings of current looking nice. Uh, I have one of my guys that's been taking over responsibility at the Zipes Park for maintaining the grass and doing all the general maintenance that needs to be done there. And he's been doing a very good job maintaining the watering and the, uh, mowing and trimming of everything there. So it started to look very nice, uh, like concert that was there the night I heard from Nancy. She was very happy with the way it looked, uh, came around really quick for her and she's very happy with that. Um, let's see what else. We've been doing the signs around the county for, uh, different things. We had to add another sign down, down Fifth Street. There was a small gap that people didn't understand was not, they still thought it was, uh, the, uh, diagram part. And a ticket was issued and we cleared that up and put another sign. So there's no more misunderstanding on that there. Uh, the stop sign, and this is something that, uh, just came up because I found it on my way into a new sign. Uh, we put up the stop sign at Elm and Loomis and we were, our biggest concern was it was gonna get damaged. Yeah, it got damaged. Somebody ran into it, uh, something you do last night and today, I wasn't did today, but when I was driving by, I don't know if they tried to bend it using their car because it was a little off counter. But now tomorrow we're gonna have to replace the pole for the whole hole of damage. And those are expensive poles, so we'll have to take the expense on that one. And we'll get it straight and get it fixed again tomorrow. We were worried about the litter time. You know, the summer, it's like we already did. So I'm not sure what, if that was intentional or not, because a lot of people were happy. You know, just as many were happy about the stop sign. That's all. Uh, we've been working on both things, getting everything ready. We got boom days coming up, we have to work in, we did nearly Fourth of July parade. We did all the, uh, road closures and everything, everything has room for improvement. So we're gonna be working on things that we need to change so we can improve that. Uh, boom days, I've already got the list of everything that needs to be done for that. Uh, Chief had mentioned earlier that we have a meeting tomorrow, boom days, maybe to go over all of our signings and road closures and everything, make sure everybody has what they can get ordered for boom days so we can keep it safe and and keep it going for the people that are gonna be here and we will have July. I was actually surprised how many people show up at the Fourth of July today. Been here my entire life and honestly, this is the first one I've ever attended. And I was really surprised at how many people were actually here. So there is a reason for this and we will keep changing what we need to do that. But sure, I'd say. My guys right now, they're, it's the time of year we take vacation and, and everything. So my crew is going up and down as far as, uh, members, but we're managing and I think they're doing a very good job. I'd like to say a special thank you to Mike Steckner. He's the one that stepped up and is taking care of Zipes Park. And he maintains the Downstreet Park very nicely as well. And but he has taken, he takes pride in his rest and is doing the, this stuff. So I'm very, very happy with him and I totally saw. Um, I think that's all I have.
Questions for Street Department?
I just wanted to say thank you. Um, I do follow that particular Facebook site that is in town called Ludlum Talkin' Moon. But I, I think it's more to the council that there are actually, uh, people were saying pleasant things uh, and they were very complimentary of telling me in the streets department. So thank you for your work, appreciate that. It's nice to get onto that side and see positive.
Yes, I don't know if it was on that side or some other side. I actually stumbled across some conspiracy theories on how we decide to pave what we pave. And it's obvious, there's a little confusion over who paves what. So just out of my own curiosity, who's paving the webby? Because I'm part of that Sin City and. Because it's part of that in-city and part of it's out-of-city.
The county and the county approached us, um, to be a part of that project and, um, it was way too much money for us. Given our other priorities, it would have been great to partner, but it was a, it was a good, it was. You know, maybe a quarter of our entire paving, paving budget, and so we decided, well, it'd be great to partner with them, we had higher priorities and. It was great that, you know, Tony's team had come up with the map because we were like, look, if we, it's. If it was a more cost-effective, we would have jumped in and, uh, but, but yes, part of it is ours and part of it is the county and the county is doing their part.
I'm wondering if we can, when Excel is done completely destroying West Third Street, if we could review the prior. Oh, my gosh, West Third.
West Side Town Line now is kind of all limited dating this year.
Yeah.
Just because of all the digging and everything that they're gonna be doing, so we're gonna concentrate a little bit more on the. Get some of those things done, and then next year, hopefully they'll be done with the areas that we can actually do a full pay. Because the last thing I want to see is what happened on Sixth.
Right.
And we paved all of that and it's been two weeks, they cut that one at the intersection.
And it sank.
And yeah, um, let you know, we're actually down there right now, I go by there and checked on them, they're fixing that one and on Sixth Street right now.
That's fantastic because it was so beautiful, it was like, oh, they tore up our accomplishment.
They've actually made some more trucks long for that video, so, but those are a little bit smaller or more just a little pop over searching solution did. Uh, but, yeah, uh, no, and it's been, West Side Town right now is just kind of like, I, there's a lot of streets that need it, but, uh, until we're done.
We're trying to find all the alternates, but like with McWeffy and McNotMassive being closed, I'm like, how do I get to see? Turning left on Harris, which nobody wants to do this.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you. You know, that was, so that was a good follow-up to all the other positive stuff, uh, in the hot seat next is the animal shelter.
Hello, everyone. Um, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So in June, we had four adoptions, two surrenders. We did have a total of sixteen impounds for both city and county, uh, six of those were unclaimed strays. We didn't have any bike quarantines of the impounds that came in, four of them needed their rabies vaccine. Seven of the sixteen impounds needed a license, so that just means some of them had their rabies vaccines. But they were not up to date on a license for the city or the county. Um, to date, on the fourteenth, we've had a hundred and thirty-three animals come through our doors. And then I have our event list here for June. Um, we had a Q and A with some ASPCA professionals, so we did some staff training, um, that was free. So we were really grateful for them donating their time to us. On the eighth, we had the court case where we worked with the Leadville Police Department. And there was the guilty verdict for ten counts of animal cruelty. We received six of those puppies, those puppies have been transferred out of state where they are up for adoption, um, along with one adult dog. And then on the twenty-fifth, we had the vaccine clinic with rez dogs where, I believe there were fifty-two animals in total from the community that were vaccinated. We were there to give out the free, um, dog license as we do with most vaccine clinics. For July, on the eighth, um, we had the new partnership for, um, the dogs going out of state. And then we imported four dogs pictured below from Best Friends Animal Sanctuary in Utah, so they're a new partner as well. On the twelfth, we had the Painting Paws Art Fundraiser, which was a lot of fun and it raised over one thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and a huge shout out to Planet Pet Hood Leadville because, um, without them hosting us, we would have had to pay to use free. So that would have really impacted our overall fundraising total there. In August, we're gonna have a yard sale and then I'm still waiting to hear back from, um, our volunteer vet. But we're gonna have a check your chip event, so we're gonna do microchips fans for the community to make sure their pet is microchipped. Or if, to find out if the microchip has moved, because they can do that. We will offer microchips at a cost, um, as well as rabies ba- rabies vaccines.
It's a very busy month. Questions for the animal shelter? Okay, thank you. All right, deputy city clerk licenses.
We don't have a ton of updates, um, girls updated their licenses, we've finished, um, and, and, and in the process of updating Roots License. They're updating it because it's almost fire, even though they're in the process of selling the retail dispensary license. Um, and then I've done a manual count of the short-term rentals, um, and I need to call five people to see. If they are renting their rooms, basically the definition of class two is if you have. Uh, you're writing them by room, you have to have more than, you have to have a license for each room, if you're running the whole home, you have, you can have one license. So a few people I need to check up on to see if they do want those additional licenses and then I can start calling people up.
Is there a deadline that they have to meet to real there?
I mean, it, it should have been done already, but this is my first year doing it, so I, um, don't actually, let me see that there was more people. Like, hey, this person ran five lessons last year, they only paid for one, um, let's, let's check up on them, so. That'll, that'll count towards the, the cap as well.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Hannah?
This may be a specific question toward Hannah and more of a general question. Um, do you have plans to revisit the conversation of, uh, the number of licenses that we have? Uh, and switch, and initially we switched into a hard number, but we were speaking about switching it from one seventy. To, uh, to one fifty, um, as a possibility and it kind of kept getting postponed. It kind of swung circle back to see if, or when we're gonna have that conversation again, because I do think it is a. Pretty important with that.
Yeah, I remember as you're talking about that, I remember the discussions we had a work session scheduled, I think twice and, uh, it was. Either postponed or canceled, so I guess the question is for the State Council, do you want to have that discussion? And, uh, if so, we will, I can look right now and see if, if, I, I'm assuming it would be a work session. So.
Well, we're looking at that, the planes that we commissioned did a- after your last work session, they did, uh, come up with some recommendations. And, and I don't think those have been shared with the council yet, because we were gonna do that at that work session and that never happened. Uh, so I do have a sh- a short memo with planes on commission recommendations. I never could actually get a full planning commission, uh, a full seven members there, uh, when we tried to discuss that a couple of times, but I do have. Comparable in from a couple of their meetings.
So I guess the question is to the council, what's your preference?
Well, uh, my preference, we did this two months ago when the topic came up to begin with. But, um, I think sooner the better, um, you know, I'm heavily involved in housing from a community aspect as well. From the governmental aspect and have a good awareness of, uh, just how much even this little change would have. Uh, as little as it seems, any amount of change in it is immensely impactful and that's just. It does mean that there's potential for more people to be housed in our community. So overall, I think that, uh, it is important to have this conversation soon, hopefully before the end of summer. So around the end of summer, it seems totally fine, maybe the beginning of September. Uh, timeline seems totally acceptable, but just having a dead set date of this is what we will have. Other conversation about it, I think is immensely important, um, and just so we can get it off the plate. And check that box one way or another, right?
So having a concrete discussion date rather than here's sort of a, what we're thinking at this moment for you to review.
Sure. So I would agree about not doing it much later than September, because then we get into some of the budget. We all know those meetings were longer, so, uh. We usually do our work sessions on the, between council meetings, so September. Twelve or twenty-six? Somebody correct me if I've got those wrong, those look like the work session dates.
I could do either, but I would very much, which is not too big of a problem.
It wants to be there.
Let's do it sooner, must somebody.
Okay, well, let me click on September twelfth and make sure we're not like picking a holiday, because that's always. Uh, let's see, so, all right, September twelve?
Okay.
Our day starts September fifth and September nineteenth.
Yes, but work sessions are always this week, so as long as I'm not doing it on a council day, so council is fifth or ninth, uh. Five or nineteen, so twelve would be the commitment, okay. Okay, we will add it.
Great, all right. Any other questions or comments on license credits? Okay, thank you, Hannah. Now we have our building department stuff, I don't know. This is anything, just more of a review? Worth shaping you on, hold that into your plan and defer. Questions or comments on the building permits? Even though I don't know to whom we would direct our question.
I, I can always feel any questions for the board.
Okay.
Yeah, and then get back to you with.
Okay, well, let's, uh, move on to the planning department then.
All right, for planning, I was on, I was on leave last week, so I did not have a digital update in your package, so I'm providing hard copy. And I apologize, Congressman Thomas, you cannot provide a update to you, um, I'll just give a verbal update, so. In terms of, uh, new active applications, we have two public hearings that will be coming your way after Planning Zone Commission, Sort of Preservation Commission. We have a new single-family home, home on Seventh Street, that will be going for a certificate of progress application at. Certain Preservation Commission next week, and then we have a change of use, this is the, uh, chiropractor's office on Front Street. Uh, that is, uh, change ownership and is proposed to be a residential duplex, has a commercial zone. That will come to you for, uh, after Planning Zone Commission next week for a conditional use permanent public hearing. Uh, in terms of other, uh, ending applications, no updates on the Circle K, U D charging stations. And the Community Justice Center at this time. In terms of, uh, applications that have been processed through our department, we have, uh, processed the first three of building permit applications. For, uh, those thirteen homes on East State Street. Um, that they came through for review, that applying colors and I was able to implement some newer requirements like construction and plant stormwater. Uh, control, most anything in the building for the application. In terms of construction, um, starting with the rail yards, phase one. Uh, so we discussed this a lot recently, the SAA amendment was executed, fully executed. And we did receive the check for the escrow funds, those were positive, I'm, I'm recording, I'm just waiting on updated incident that the city attorney requested. Before I record that document. The, uh, also in phase one, the city's consulting engineer has completed their inspections of phase one. They have, uh, provided a report, I just finished reviewing that report today, uh, the, the issues that were identified in that report for, uh. This is for as-built improvements, uh, for the summer, uh, those issues are primarily focused on stormwater, stormwater. Um, there was a, uh, snowmelt event back in April that really showed how the stormwater system was functioning. That we documented that well, and so those comments have been provided to the developer, uh, that will just be part of this continuing conversation of getting this developer to. Uh, come into the plots. In regards to phase two, I, uh, the last council meeting, I did my update on the rock crushing. Um, the latest on that is, while I was on leave, I did receive a response from C P H E, um, basically stating that. They passed out enforcement to the Colorado Air Pollution Control Division. Um, you may have noticed this rock crushing has now completed and there's just, uh, stacks of soil and rock out there. Um, so they said that this A B C D was notified and they're investigating, I did, uh. Uh, I've never worked in A B C, A B C D before, but I did, um, email them and ask for status on, on that case. Uh, I had not heard that yet. And then wrapping up the code amendments, uh, as you know, we, uh, thank you for passing those, uh, those two. Uh, orders two and three for the sort of preservation and land state updates, those will be effective in early August. Uh, I, last thing I had was, uh, the Planning Zone Commission, as I've been kind of updating councils, been working on. The rec- the recommendations, um, for housing variety that were originally recommended by the policy advisor team. And P N C has been taking on, kind of taking those on as their own and, uh, working on those and modifying those. So this is the, the code package that is evolved to, um, to the draft, proposes incentive zoning and density bonus. I think we're at a point where, uh, we now have red lines, uh, draft red lines, there's still a lot more to develop. But I think we're at a point where we'd like to get the council's, uh, feedback on that before we go too much further. I think we're at a good point for that, uh, so I'd like to see, um, speaking of work sessions, I'd like to see if the council will be interested. In having a joint work session with the Planning Zone Commission to review the initial draft of red lines. Uh, I'll be, even working on this more between now and then, so I'm more ready to prepare to, to get some feedback before we get too far, before we get into budget season. That way we can probably go back to planning, so we can mission incorporate your feedback, um, get this more refined, go through a public. Uh, process and then, and then come here, uh, before we come back to council for adoption. Um, so the earliest possibility we, we probably ready to do that will be Tuesday, August twenty-second. I think you just scheduled another work session, so, uh, we can be flexible, I'll need to confirm with, you know, Planning Zone Commission. Um, but, but please let me know, one, if the council would like to do that joint work session with the Planning Zone Commission. And, and then, uh, two, if, if that data is Tuesday, August twenty-second works, I'll go back to the Planning Zone Commission, confirm with them next weekend.
Well, I have always found joint work sessions with planning and zoning very hopeful, um. So I would be in favor of that. Anybody else? Any, any different feelings?
I'm, I'm in favor of it as well, I think it's a great idea.
So then. The next question is when?
It seems fine to me, August twenty-second, if not, it sounded like, or next September, in between was pretty great as well, so.
Are you, you have that extra Tuesday in August, three twenty-nine?
Right. You also do that.
The extra Tuesday, they're always nice.
So you're twenty-ninth then?
Either one. I may be about there.
Okay, all right, well, let's, uh, simply pencil on twenty-ninth, I will go back to Planning Zone Commission next week and confirm that with them. And then I'll update you and confirm that in your next council meeting. Uh, that can include my, okay, thank you. Any questions for me?
Um, what's the height on those new homes going up on those east?
See here, um.
Are they next in that?
I don't recall, but I can answer that, uh, just to give you details.
And what is, what am I, this work session, what should I label it, uh, I, I?
Uh, I would call it the house, housing variety, uh, code amendments work session. We were calling this code package the, the patent, uh, recommendations, but since it has evolved so, so much since the original recommendations. Going forward, I refer to this as the housing variety.
And I know we've had discussions in the past about revisiting the map site. Um, I know there's just been so much going on.
Yeah.
With planning zoning and everything, but I, I know in the past, we had had some discussion about should we shorten that after? That one building went up on West. Seven, is it?
A residential building? Okay, so that is, that's, uh, I think a great comment and that would be something that we could absolutely discuss, uh, during this code amendment. Because we're already talking about, um, we're already talking about, you know, typing up the rules in some areas, but then allowing density bonus. If they throw up bonuses and basically incentive zoning, if, if someone. throw up bonuses and basically incentive zoning, if, if someone wants to buy the restricted houses voluntarily, then they get to exceed, won't otherwise be their restrictions. So that's interesting, and the context of this conversation, that would be a great topic about that. That didn't count within thirty seconds.
It's like thirty seconds we've done years, doesn't it, like you get, do you get like three times as much?
Are you still looking at numbers?
Yes. Twenty nineteen. So they, they look about five and a half feet remaining.
Yeah. From the midpoint of, um,
No, that, that's actually two to the gable, so they actually, they're actually about ten feet there. Uh, this, I, I have lots of other renderings, but this is just a quickly local, they were like, so, you know, very Victorian style, I, I'm actually very happy with. Yeah, it's, they have a lot more, you know, intricate detail and stuff, so I think the architects are, I think it's about as good as we can ask for.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for planning? Okay, well, sales tax comparisons, financials and bills are not present.
I have some information, yes, so we, again, uh, Michelle's getting up to speed and we hope to get that information, I just got the, um, email with the sales tax comparisons, just look at this real quick, uh, from the county and so I can give you the sales tax comparison numbers, uh. Okay, so it looks like, um, uh, the county census in West July twelfth, our sales tax, let's see, um, two hundred twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars and twenty, um, three cents, and so let me open this spreadsheet real quick, that is, um, June, and so if I plug that into our spreadsheet for sales tax comparisons, I can get that out to you tomorrow, but yeah, two hundred twenty seven thousand five hundred is slightly below what we budgeted, uh, it was hard because for twenty twenty two, we had that ridiculous amount of extra money, so, I mean, don't even look at twenty twenty two, so twenty twenty two is four hundred and seventy two thousand dollars, four hundred, or four seventy two, four thirty two. If you look at twenty twenty one, um, we were at a hundred and seventy nine thousand six seventy one, so if you look, I mean, obviously, a hundred and seventy nine thousand six seventy one in twenty twenty one, and now in twenty twenty three, two twenty seven five hundred, it's slightly below what we budgeted at two hundred eighty two thousand six hundred twenty nine dollars, but we're still eighteen percent over our revenues so far for the year.
And what we collect in June reflects April, right?
Pardon me?
What we collect in June reflects April, uh, which.
Yes, I always. Yeah, I think this is, I'm always confused about that.
Are these my numbers?
No, these are Crystal's numbers. Yeah, so we have numbers, this is actually, we have.
It's not, Donna used to report what the treasurer paid her, so these are actual what we collect, didn't she?
This is what Crystal says that we are getting or are going to get, so we're still eighteen percent over what we projected for our budget for the year. It's just that this month was a little lower lodging tax, your numbers, you know, I appreciate those council alerts, and those came in a little bit lower. You know, what's crazy about it is that everyone feels like town is busy and busier than it's been, so I don't really understand, I mean, obviously, we'll see.
I think it was the first two weeks, the weather was so bad, just can't have that turn us here.
Yeah, so we'll see what July and August look like, we're not, we're not, you know, too far off of what we budgeted, and again, we're over budget already, and the January's numbers were amazing, so we'll, uh, see what July and August told with our bigger events and, and that type of thing, so pressing our fingers, you know, we thought we might hit a plateau, and this is the real question, is are we hitting that plateau or, or not, and um, I'm talking to a lot of the businesses in town, and it's, it's weird, I've heard from some that weekday business is down, but weekend business is off the hook. So, uh, as a business owner, uh, and, you know, Tim and I have talked a little bit, Tim, any additional reflection on what you're seeing as far as what these numbers mean?
We, I checked at the end of June. They're pretty hard side around numbers for up to the end of June, and we were flat, like, with last year, completely even. I have since not crunched any numbers since then, well. Just from the business that we're doing in July, we're, we're on par with last year.
Okay.
So I would say it's all right.
Go.
But I will say July, um, Safeway, it's they're all time highest sales, um, so.
For all the shelter.
Yeah, and what's crazy, so what's crazy is you have, you have your, your feeling, like, you, you know, I feel like, you know, you're in, there's like, there, semi front of me, and there's there's no chocolate milk, none, none, you know, and I was like, I bought chocolate milk, you know, so, so, you know, you, you get these things, and as somebody else said, left turns on Harrison's, you know, that takes forever, the line at City on Hills around the corner. I get the, like, I feel like there's a lot of activity and people in town, but I was surprised to see the numbers, so maybe the numbers are just gonna pick up, I'm hoping councilmy alert's right, it's just a little bit of weather, but um, you know, by all accounts, you know, the streets aren't empty, there are people here. Uh, there, I mean, I saw whole castle, I mean, the, the visitor center's crazy, you see castles of people there all the time. So, uh, they're probably who's buying all the chocolate milk, but, but no, I mean, like, none of the shelves are empty. So anyway, I'm hoping that, you know, flat's not bad, we thought we might hit flat, we would love to, you know, see it progressing up.
I still recall, at least some of the numbers we got would be two months delay, and, and if that's true, if I'm remembering correctly, then that would reflect April, which was, you know, I think our only remaining children. Yeah, but I, I always remember Donna, like, putting out the, the numbers and be like, remember, these are two months.
Yeah.
So. You reported what the treasurer have paid, so that's always delayed, but these are actual state-reported numbers, okay? And I will learn that eventually, but you might have to remind me.
Yeah, it, it, it is, it is confusing, but, uh, I, it, you know, we have numbers populated through June on this sales tax comparison spreadsheet, and the numbers we got from Crystal were for June, so. If that is wrong, I will clarify the next meeting, so sales tax comparisons, that's the report, the other financials, we, uh, will work on and get ready for the next packet.
And I'm assuming we're paying the bills that we will
Yep.
eventually put down there.
Yes, so that is one thing that, yeah, Michelle has picked up, accounts payable, uh, we are paying our bills and writing checks, and so we will get that to you for, you'll probably have a bigger packet next time.
Just to add something about the delay, you don't actually pay June sales tax until, you have until July twentieth to do that. So if those numbers reflected actual June numbers, I would be surprised because
Yeah.
not everybody has paid their sales tax.
Yeah, okay, we'll pin that down.
The question persists.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on sales tax billing? Bills, okay. Okay, next we have a presentation from the economic corporation.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, perfect, no, I wanted to say one good thing, which is, and, uh, just want to comment on that.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, and I think I attached it at some bottom, something or a permit thing, which I'm sure got lost every month or two ago, I can't even get it, no, no, not, not calling you out.
Oh, you just did, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to say it felt important to you too, and I appreciate that you brought it back on.
Yeah, sure, um. So I have continued representing the city on the, on the EDC. And Cameron has graciously taken over as president of the board, and she's organized, um, a series of strategic planning sessions with a lady named Kate Call decor, Call decor?
Yeah.
Who was a strategic consultant. Um, where she, she had a number?
Four pounds, I say pounds.
Anyway, she founded a company called Strategy Architect, so this is what she specializes in. I know the funding model that EDC has well come up in these meetings, so I just wanted to get council updated on the status of the EDC and kind of get a sense of how the council feels about being part of that funding model as we have been in the past. So I'll let Cameron elaborate, here's some of the details of progress that we made in the EDC.
So we started with our, um, in January and just kind of got everybody realigned and back together, and then that process was more of a kind of, let's get everything out on the table, and we are, where we've been, what's not working, what is working. We got through that, did another session with him, and actually, and started to work closely with state EDC, um, and getting some of their direction and guidance involved as well, so that was the next kind of month or two, and we actually had the state EDC um, executive director was supposed to show up in our next meeting, in our strategy meeting, and she had gotten pulled in two directions at once, and we had been looking at Kate to come in, and last minute Kate was able to join us, turns out she's amazing, and she's done a fair number of strategy consultants, all the way from Wall Street Center Denver to state EDC where, so she's a pretty competent human that we were very um, gracious that had joined us on that time, and at that point, and figured that over if you announced, they voted that this was the right direction. She's helped us take a really close look at, you know, we have a good overview, this good high level, look at where the EDC could be and what it's tried to do for ten years, and we all know that that hasn't been as effective as we would like it to be. There's been some great movement, but it's time for some outcomes, and so she's been very instrumental in helping us getting to the mini grid. Um, we are in the phase right now, we just went through kind of making sure that we're clear on what is our goal, or we think, and was EDC, I think, we've known it to be Main Street, we've known it to be a part of Chamber, EDC, we've seen it do a lot of different things over the years, and really getting focused on the economic development solely, and what does that mean? And so, under her guidance, we did, um, last full day was, uh, what day was that, June?
June nineteenth.
June nineteenth, that's right after Marasom, it's all linked together a tiny bit, but, um, it was a very productive day, uh, eight hours, definitely we discovered that maybe six hours was enough time for the future, not that you guys made it that far, but eight hours was a little bit much, just to really put your dent in the game. And she's taking us all the way from the top to the bottom, we've passed through some pretty tough places that I think have been dark corners that the EDC has been kind of shoving off, and we've been able to bring them out, get kind of cleared, and at this point, um, our next meeting is the month of August fourth, it'll be a six-hour, you know, you know, and we have, we, what we've come out of it with is a few things that are very concrete at this point, that the EDC is going to play a normal neutral role. Um, we really want to work closely, I just came from, we had second business round table with Chamber, Main Street, tourism, and Katie from the visitor center tonight, and just us getting aligned and how we're working together, so we're not going beyond the same resource models and all these different pieces. And really how we work together what is the identity and where is the moving and how we support the city and county and the community as a whole, and be that true representative voice and neutral voice, so not necessarily 100% aligned with county or city, but more on a neutral standpoint and helping shepherd where where we collectively believe we're trying to go, so, you know, hoping to hold more conversations with city and county involved in those together, but looking at more of a model, um, not necessarily of the doers, we're not going to be the ones digging the ground and getting ready for infrastructure and for, um, way the business part of every space, but finding success in helping bring those right skilled individuals in at different times, in addition, as we move into the funding model, and this is something that's really critical is for us to be within not the same resources that Chamber or Main Street are looking at, um, but us identifying outside resources that we can actually help in bigger projects within the community and the county and city, from housing to workforce to childcare, and looking at these models of funding at a much higher level that are not aligned with the same resources. Um, so, not everything is set in stone or clear, but we are moving along a path that is a little bit more defined, and we're walking out of this with very actionable tasks and goals, so what you have initially, and we're probably two knees away from this, is an external report that you can move at and go, okay, here's exactly what the EDC is going to focus on, and how is that aligned with what the city's needs are, how do we participate in where the city is at the moment, what is, you know, what are the projects that are important? And alongside of that, looking at, you know, I think we're all in this place together at the same time, and what is the identity of that little instrument, and how are we pushing forward? And attracting business that will want to keep that, so moving through those models with the city and county in terms of what business we want to attract, that would fit on all of these, we need young families living here, we need our full of the work, we need childcare, we need, um, a number of different pieces, but we've got housing group working on housing issues, we've got workforce, working on workforce. And we need to be a contributing factor that's helping shepherd and creating a container around that, and in some places, helping put funding together, so how special, wow. So we're looking at kind of the, the neutral, and also, I think, as we talked about it, one of the other pieces that's instrumental is not that we don't love having all of you in your roles, and as we do our BOCC, but those are rotating roles, so where's the consistency that holds the vision of let bills self and where it's going, and the economic development operation wants to work very closely with the Chamber and the Main Street group and the city and the county and tourism and our visitor center and all those different pieces to make sure we're all holding a combination and common goal and helping shepherd that. Um, to that point, and I know that part of what's on the table is around this funding piece, and we are not through our full structure, but I think what we identified this meeting even tonight is while there was money earmarked around economic development, that the city would decide how that was, what was appropriate for the use of that, um, we would strongly support thinking the Chamber's really working hard at some of their pieces and moving forward, and I think that's something that can alleviate some of Adam's work load. And those are things that we're kind of trying to tackle together, as opposed to be looking at how we're utilizing the same resources to survive those same resources, and we think about even how that money might be utilized for the Chamber to the office piece, so they can help support tourism families, and the EDC kind of helping elevate both of those, helping hold that, but that we don't necessarily need to directly buy all those resources at this moment. And when it's appropriate, and there's a project or a task that matches, that the city needs EDC to be aligned with, that we consider how that funding aligns with that versus we're always looking at the same amount of money, how do we how do we produce what Max said, amount of money, if that makes sense, and how do we do that for the county and the state, so kind of removing ourselves from that model to some degree, and making sure that all of us in the business group are there we're, we're thinking about elevate let bills, do a nice community record, um, and that's coming from that. But just thinking about how to work together with this, so that's really, EDC will become I think instrumental in looking at business partners that match where we need to go, that fill in things like a business partner in those areas, that's our direction, is how do we play that role? And maybe someone the gatekeeper, it aligns with what we all believe is where a let bill looks ahead, and help hold some of those pieces, but very strongly seeking and in attracting those business partners and jobs, and things like a restaurant, for example, that might help these communities, that would also help stabilize childcare, family, young families wanting to live here, what are the pieces that we're missing, so the, the economic the development group really focusing on those pieces together collaboratively and more of a collective impact style, as opposed to working solely with one or the other, or trying to address um, more isolated tasks, so I'll just pause there, I said a lot, they didn't even make sense, is there questions?
I guess what is the ask?
There's no ask, this is just a representation, I mean, mine could be that you think about that money for the, the Chamber right now, honestly, if there was an ask if it comes up on the table. If it comes up on the table. My ask, and that would be from five of us who met today, we all talked about knowing that that money is sitting there and. That could be a very valuable resource that'll strengthen the Chamber and get them back on their feet. They are ready to. Launch with websites, launch with also websites for all of our businesses and help take on some. Some of the burden that Adam's been carrying and I believe that's Tracy they come speak to directly. But I think one of the things that we're seeing is the splinter. Um. Of how much is impact is happening on tourism right now and how we can help bolster um. Both of the Chamber and the EDC is doing its work in terms of right now. And I think where we're going to come out of that is a much stronger and more clear place to share that. The asking there was one originally would be around. That we consider that funding and how Tracy can. Speak to that herself and what that budget might look like, but that funding might be thought about in that direction. I think that could be a strong support and we need some support for that.
I'm going to put up my planning app here and say that. One thing I think that really helped housing. Was they went out and they they gathered information, they created a plan. They presented that plan, they got buy-in from the community. And the Economic Development Corp has always been kind of, well, we're here if you need us. But there's no guiding plan. And I I wonder if that's something that you guys are talking about because. You're right, we we rotate, we're in it now, but if you have this plan that everyone's blob into. It gives you a roadmap for where you're headed.
We're going to have an externally facing report that demonstrates what the EDC is doing. That's one of the culminations of the work that we're doing. But I think I want to start with Tracy's concern, order is not just that, it's our conflict, it's our overall county conflict and it's where we're headed together. And so while we can have it for the EDC. We need one, we need to revise some of the pieces and we're working strategically with that group as well to help push that along. And one of my, one of my invitations and and I put this out to county and I put that here as well. I think Kate's a pretty strong resource and more that we are working with a similar facilitator and strategist in some of these places. I think we get to see a whole picture for the edit and you have that overlap, that could be a very strong systematic shift that we haven't. Been able to do to this point, but AES will have an externally facing report that shows our roadmap. But that roadmap is also very strongly aligned with us getting this conflict re- revisited and reassessed and redone and those. That those timelines are being set in order to kind of address that and we're working closely to address that as well.
Um I would like to say something to piggyback on what Tracy just said and then I'll get to you. Councilmember Thomas, okay? Okay, uh so. I guess what I would say or recommend is that. What I would love to see is essentially like the policy advisement team, like like Housing had. Um which I think would help us pass certain legislative bits. That would help build an attractive uh business community to attract businesses or stabilize businesses. And specifically, I'm thinking about getting some guidance on S TIPS. Which, you know, like when the railers came in, we just like laid ketchup, like, oh my god, we need to have a reaction already. We do all this stuff. Like with S TIPS, if we had that legislation in place, that could, which is very similar to the. Property tax that you forgive and peel off and put into something to fund downtown projects. Um within this zone, like an S TIP would essentially peel off some of the sales tax that that business would pay. And the city and county would give up. You know, their rights to it and put it back into a separate project that that business wanted to employ. To better their business or strengthen the, you know, the business park, like build this level plaza outside of a restaurant or or something like that. That would benefit the community um. Which sounds really easy and I know that the the implementation of that would be. I mean, but I think having that 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 already in place as sort of a. Get what? Have you contributed this year? Like, here's what we can offer you to make this transition. Better or to, you know, produce a better outcome. Um but what I would, so what I would appreciate from this coalition is. Something of an advisement team that would say, here is what you need to do to us and the city and the county. In order to put legislation like this in place, just like the Housing Policy Advisor said, here is what you need to pass in order for us to. Take off with these potential grants.
That's a great one, a great example. And what I would offer is that what we're playing with is that's exactly the kind of goal that we're interested in. Where we might not be the expert, but what we would do is do the research, get the expert at the table to come in and shoot all of us. And, you know, it's like, if pre-struggling has taught me anything, it has barely what to do with putting horsemen in stuff in my home. It's a lot, no, you can't. And it's a lot about bringing those people together and that's really the direction that we see. Is shooting to go and I think this is the kind of information that we'll want to garner, what we're missing, where are those gaps, we can do a gap analysis on a big scale level. And then come back and bring that scale, you know, expert in to say, hey, here's where we go. But that will come from research that we do as well. And putting those pieces together to find the right one. Yeah, I think that's the perfect example of what we're shooting for.
All right, Councilmember Thomas, save it for your patients.
Uh well, thank you. And I appreciate your idea about the policy advisement team. I think I think that's a good idea. And I also appreciate how the EDC is coordinating with these other groups. Uh now, including the Main Street Program and the Chamber of Commerce. And I heard you talk about a couple of things that would make our community more attractive to businesses, including. Available housing, childcare, that kind of thing. And I haven't heard much discussion about a business park or an industrial park. And do you see that as part of your role moving forward to work with the county or other entities on trying to help develop that sort of? Uh feature for our community to be attractive to business?
One hundred percent. You know, I think again, where our role is in that. I was just in a meeting before this actually discussing to some degree and we've been having a discussion around who are the businesses that we want to attract. And who do we partner together into that to make that be successful? Because we can't even build an industrial park and it it take off by itself and it's. You know, it's far enough removed that we need to have a plan. But so, yeah, it's working both through the county. On that, but then also I think our whole community in a way, there's some level of us. We need to, it's this decision time to a degree of what direction are we headed? What's the model of business that we want to bring in? And to the best part, but I'm not going to get a hundred percent buy-in from everybody. But our role in that is in the realm of attracting those business partners, having those conversations, putting the incentive packages together, which is similar what you're talking about as well. What seems to, what incentivizes even the move into this area? But also being strategic about who they are, pairing their voices together so what we're creating matches us, matches who we are. We we seem to have a lot of knowledge of what we don't want to be. I think we can all agree. And we know that there's some directions that we want to hold on to, the core values and the heritage of this community and. How do we do that and who's the businesses that we track? So yes, first off, you know, the the. Collaboration with the county is is already in play around that. And I think it also involves the city, involves everybody, getting those voices together. Um but thinking strategically about those partners and and building on that together.
Glenn Springs did some strategic thinking and, you know, added a whole sector of businesses, different from their. Kind of downtown thing too, and they did very well with that sort of strategic thinking ahead of time. Um we do have an industrial park, believe it or not, you just wouldn't really know it because it's been languishing. Uh as you turn off out of town. All that area on the left-hand side of the road um is our industrial park. Could use some. Okay. Any other comments or questions for Cameron or Tim?
What do you anticipate for the future as far as the city providing any funding?
I don't know the answers to that directly. Like I don't, like honestly, I don't see them. Like we don't want to chase the same resources like this. I guess by the three hundred thousand seems really viable for the Chamber. We don't want to chase the same resources.
Do you think come budget time? Um the EDC, the anticipate EDC. Coming up with a project um or. Or collaboration with the city.
What I see happening is, and I think right now, like, you know, and again, we're we're in the throes of this, so I can't. Firm this, but the direction that we're headed is more. Hey, let's look at what's happening here right now. And where are those resources that she's worked itself all behind for this one? You know, the. And right now, the Chamber group event that out of our group and I think it'll alleviate and also help diversify workforce around businesses during our businesses. So I don't actually see. I don't see us necessarily coming to budget time saying, hey, here's a project. More looking at the broader picture and probably us looking at funding law that has to do with bigger grants and angel that are tied money. That's a little bit bigger so that we can support and elevate lead though and businesses. And if we do hit crisis again, the EDC is in the realm of, they can actually also support. What the businesses might need in that kind of price. And or be a strategic partner in helping fund some some of these pieces that help our businesses grow. So currently in the model, in the way that we're discussing it moving forward. I don't see us looking at that directly. I can also see at some point where we all go, hey, this would be a great fit for the EDC and the city would like it to get executed and we collaborate and work around that. But a specific request kind of your own budget time. I don't currently see that issue. And potentially not, not again, but that we would strategically work to elevate all of ours together. And then we'll be looking at different funding laws to help support that. That's not to say we don't look in line with you. We just want to do it from a different seat that doesn't have this burden of impact on buying personal resources. And the constraints and burden of that frequency. And we believe that there's a way that we can accomplish that. And reduce some of that revenue and on the county as well and continue forward as part of the model. That answered your question.
Ducks, thank you for that.
Last comments?
Would counsel entertain listening to Tracy and the Chamber request? For some of that EDC one or economic development?
You need to to come with and ask and present like this? Well, of course, anybody can.
Well, yeah, correct.
I, you know, I want to hear what they have to say because I think the Chamber has been very weak for a long time. And I would want to hear some more about. This idea to reconstitute themselves and move forward, you know, I I think. I'm a little skeptical, but I am absolutely willing to hear more um information and plans.
I think if I if I may, the direction that I'm seeing some renewed energy that hasn't been there largely because we are coming together as a group and saying, hey. We are not fighting this out. We're not taking out of our similar resources, but how are we going to use this together? And that renewed energy, I think, has helped the Chamber, actually, I've been applying some posters that they want to bring on their board and the structure. With a plan. And I think they're in a position now to bring that plan forward and say, here are the first steps that we'd like to fund and help us get up, get around and actually run this. And the EDC's role in that would be to shepherd and 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 support that and help hold that. Help help the Chamber be successful. So the EDC will take an active role and then we're just not buying from the resource.
Yeah, I think I I think as with any anybody who's requesting funding from the city, like, come forth. Tell us your plan, tell us what you're going to do with the money. I don't know, like.
Are there other comments on the, on the, what questions on the Chamber petition doing that needs to be, or would be helpful for them to know?
I mean, so what they answered earlier, uh the game plan. I I do want to know what, you know, why, why would we fund you when we could fund a myriad of other things that would be. Pretty successful, right? Um I mean, we just talked about St. George's much longer, he's a lot, or this. Our congressional fund or whatever funds to allocate to that. Uh and that's a perfect example of someone who came up there, said, look, this site one has an impact, this is what we're going to do with it. Um so following some sort of manner because uh with they know this one, I I don't really. See the current point with it without presentation, so some type of information to help me feel like. This is useful and this is why. Um otherwise, I'm just going to keep feeling practice a little bit when it's they're muted. So by all means, I'm hoping to hear about it, but. Uh. Would take some convincing as well.
Other comments? Okay, then they should bring it. Yes, sorry.
Just, I was just going to say on that topic, I'd certainly be interested in what the Chamber had to say, but I, I think it would be difficult for me to consider. Uh in any ask or movement from the Chamber in the absence of really understanding what the complementary. Organizations are doing, including Main Streets and the A D C, uh the EDC and the Visitor Center. Seems like they're all. You know, all working to support the community. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, it would be difficult for me to take an an ask from one without really understanding how they fit into the whole.
We'd be happy to bring the whole scene for it.
That's an excellent point. Thank you.
And I'm going to say, i- if if you all want to let me know, I I'll schedule it on a upcoming agenda.
Yep.
Just, uh I do think our next agenda right now looks a little busy. So if you're inquiring about availability for people to come and talk, I think uh right now, next. Our next agenda looks a little busy.
What is that, the one after that?
Uh we have department reports. Actually, it looks pretty good. It looks pretty good. So department reports make the meeting a little bit longer, but right now. We have some potential discussions and uh. Uh a certificate of appropriateness, but it looks pretty good. So that's the fifteen.
Fifteen? And then the one after that is.
Well, the one after that is September five and it's totally open right now.
Let me talk to the group and see what they want and then we'll give them a back and request. One of those two, I hear you saying the one before, that's pretty bold though.
Yeah. And I know you're just a little busy right now. So.
I appreciate all this time and and questions and comments and. And I think that we can move together, we can move forward without doing this together and seeing where the misses and the gaps. And then we're taking that into account as we do this restructuring. So I welcome feedback anytime and please feel free to email me as well. At three in the morning, make a note.
Thank you very much. Alright, we are not actually that far off of schedule. Although that was an interesting and very important discussion. And thanks to you, Tim, also with that. Um we have before us Resolution number fourteen. Um regarding approving surveys agreement between the City of Leadville and Metcalf Archaeological Consultants. Like a very interesting field of study. Um. Well, Lori or or Jacob, I don't know who would like to tell us all about this. Um.
Well, Lori, yes, sorry. Yes, if I may, and Jacob can answer technical questions that I can't. Um basically, as you know, the HBC, what Historic Preservation Commission. Did receive a grant, CLG grant, and part of the requirement of that grant is to be with and in a contract with your consultants. Because the grant is for the surveys that we want to do. And so we need to get into a contract with Metcalf. And just a little background on Metcalf, they have done uh several. Surveys working with town, like the Town of Erie and the City of Greeley on these various types of surveys. So they're very well aware of how it works and. The process of getting paid and all of that for the CLG grant. So uh this resolution is basically just approving. Um authorizing the city administrator to go into a contract on behalf of the HBC. For the funds, the uh Metcalf is uh twenty nine thousand three hundred fifty seven, I believe. And then there's a couple of other added things that we're doing such as uh town hall meetings and flyers to let people know that. We will be having a survey going on. So this first request will just for permission to go into a contract with Metcalf. For the survey.
And and we went back and forth about uh this contract because contracts over fifteen thousand dollars need to come to you all. And, you know, this is a sort in some sense a pass through because the majority of the money is grant money, but we thought it's good for you all to know. What the Historic Preservation Commission is doing. And this is great work. And so we thought just on abundance of caution to have you all approve it.
Yeah. Any questions?
Where is the local management?
Be actually on the cover sheet or the council cover sheet. Be actually on the cover sheet or the council cover sheet.
Yeah.
And we have gotten the twenty five thousand that, okay, you're asking about eight thousand. That comes into play with the three thousand that we received from the Lake County Community Fund Grant. And the fifteen hundred received, we received from visit Leadville to a national tour from former brand. So that was.
To where it's making that kind of difference in the local match?
Yes.
Okay.
We've got over half of that local match already with other local brands and thirty six other dollars. Yes.
Excellent. I'm wondering why the area on East Eighth and Ninth Street is known as the West End Residential Area.
It's because of the way, do you guys remember that two thousand, I want to say seventeen, maybe sixteen, um? Basically, it was a, help me remember the name of that shape and it, it was a plan of staying uh, res- cultural resources.
Resource survey.
Survey that basically said, bring uh, Dion, what was? Anyway, that particular thing gave us, these are your priority areas. And they listed them in four different areas and that's what they named that area. We did not name that area that. Uh, but they're, they're talking west side, but it's literally right off of Garrison going down. So I I wish I knew why they, because then there's also a west end commercial that's at the other end of town on that west side. We're only going off of how it was worded in that plan, that survey plan, so that we know what priorities to go by. And that's, they just all have their own names already by that. That, yeah, grand.
We'll just take that at face value.
Eventually challenged.
It was a survey planned by, yeah, a different three cables and, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right.
This is for under made robberies.
It is, yes. There are along the Eighth and Ninth, all the way down the west side. So technically what.
Cultural resource survey produced for.
Heading west from the east.
Underneath our brains.
Yes, heading west from the east. There you go. That, that makes it almost right.
Almost acceptable. Okay, other questions?
Are, are we concerned that uh, when a determiner uh, structure is historic or not, that we might fall out of a, a role?
I certainly don't think at this point, I'd say we're behind on getting surveys done, but having that survey plan helps us and being a CLG is really helping us because we're working with the state to reinforce the district and make sure that it's protected. So that's helping us not be in that position, but.
It's a great.
You have a possibility.
Great question. I, I think the state sees Leadville right now as working in the right direction. And the fact that we're obtaining coastal resource surveys for the first time, they absolutely want to support that. And they're not gonna come s- slap us on the hand before doing coastal resource surveys. They say, oh, we're decorating an infrastructure that we're gonna take away. That, that doesn't support their work. It doesn't support our work. So, um, so it's a great question to answer though.
Okay, let's just set in our baseline again.
Exactly, correct. Their, their focus is on uh other communities who have had this, this baseline established for decades and uh their development is going in the wrong direction.
And as taken point out, I, I do want to note that, um, you said this earlier. Going into this contract, getting these surveys done will certainly help us with what you guys just tapped on code amendments. It will let us know exactly what resources we do have and if that house that wants to change the whole front of it is indeed historic and contributing to and shell district. So it's gonna be very helpful in going forward from this code amendment.
Okay, other questions? And I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to the document, number fourteen, series one twenty three. Resolution approving the services agreement between the city of Leadville and Metcalf Archaeological Consultants.
Or else in second.
We do all in favor? Do we roll call on resolutions?
You just, well, usually you ask if there's any further discussion.
Any further discussion? And then, then.
Yes.
Uh, council member comments?
Yes.
Mayor President Green?
Yeah.
And some of them, Lalea?
Yes.
Council member Hill?
Yeah.
And member Loretson?
Yeah.
And council member Grant and Mayor Oviedo. Okay, excellent. Well, then the second part of this is actually approving the funding for said contract. Um, do you have anything to add?
I just want to point out council member Loretson's point that yes, there was a approximately eight thousand dollars in the local match with this grant and we have secured. What did I say? It's about four thousand, forty five hundred. And so we are asking, and I do want to mention that, uh, given our, the HPC's budget, which was up this year from our normal two thousand, you guys were gracious enough to give us five thousand. And we do have right around four thousand left. It just got really scary to use that. And then if anything goes over with, these are all estimates. If anything goes over, then we would have nothing. And so it got a little scary. So we are asking for the thirty six hundred and five dollars that would make us reach that eighty one oh five.
Would this money come out of contingency or where?
That's a good question. Um, because the Historic Preservation Commission has its own line item in the budget. Um, we would probably just do a supplemental to their budget.
Okay.
But realistically, it could be a wash. Yeah, it's technically a thirty three hundred dollar thing. And so this would be approximately a wash. It nature is he has no plans to use those funds. Now, end of the year. And all the open houses for the code of events are complete, so.
Okay, other questions or comments? And I would entertain a motion.
Uh, Loretson, most of our resolution number fifteen serves a twenty twenty three resolution authorizing three thousand six hundred and five dollars to the Historic Preservation Commission for expenses related to the cultural resource.
Also.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Council member Hill?
Yes.
Mayor President Green?
Yes.
Council member Lalea?
Yeah.
Council member Raiton?
Yeah.
Council member Tomic?
Yes.
Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Okay, next we actually have a public hearing on the change of ownership. Roots RX from Robert Holmes to Sun Theory, SPV two LLC. So because this is a public hearing, I have some words to say. Good evening. My name is Dana Green and I am the acting chair of the Leadville Marijuana Licensing Authority. This is a public hearing before the authority to consider the transfer of ownership application for a retail marijuana dispensary license currently licensed under Roots RX at the property known as one four five Front Street. When the public hearing is opened, I will ask for staff to discuss the highlights of the application, followed by the applicant to make a brief presentation of his or her case. And then testimony of any individuals in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the application and then those individuals who wish to speak against the application. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, which is the applicant's opportunity to respond to any comments made by members of the public. After rebuttal, uh, we close the public input portion of the public hearing and allow the authority an opportunity to ask questions. Once the public input portion of the hearing is closed, we will not accept additional testimony unless it is in response to questions posed by the authority with the applicant and the city's staff. At the conclusion of our questioning, the authority will render a decision. This public hearing is quasi, quasi judicial, which means that we have to follow certain personnel requirements to establish a record. For this reason, it is important that when you speak, you identify yourself. If you would like to submit written materials, please understand that the city will have to hold on to these materials for at least thirty days after city council renders its decision. Are there any questions about the public hearing procedure? At this time, I ask the authority to disclose any ex parte communication between themselves and either of the parties involved. Notice that this hearing is required to be published in the newspaper at least ten days prior to tonight's hearing and the property posted with a poster indicating the public hearing. This year.
Yes.
Have you, have these requirements been satisfied?
Yes.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing of the transfer of ownership from Robert Holmes Jr. of RFSC LV LLC doing business as Roots RX to Sun Theory SPV two LLC Connor Coleman. Okay. That, what highlights? Regarding this?
Um, you know, they are completed everything that has been asked and is required by ordinance. The only thing I'm waiting on is the fingerprints from the owner.
Fingerprints from the owner? The current owner?
The, the, the new owner.
All right. Okay, um, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Mister Wonderlick, could you give us, um, your presentation, please?
Absolutely. My name is David Wonderlick and I'm an attorney and I represent Sun Theory SPV two LLC, uh, which is the acquiring entity uh that's picking up uh, the assets from RSCLV LLC, known as the Roots RX Store on Front Street in the city of Leadville. Sun Theory is asking that the city council approve its application for transfer of ownership. I'm gonna come back to that fingerprints question in a moment, but uh, other than that, the applicant Sun Theory has completed all the uh requisite items on the application uh under city ordinance. It's paid all the fees. Uh, its application has been approved by the Colorado Marijuana Enforcement Division for transfer of ownership and is only waiting on uh, the city of Leadville to approve this transfer of ownership for this particular license. Uh, Sun Theory is managed by a gentleman named Connor Omen, who is an experienced marijuana operator. Uh, he's working closely with the seller, Rob Holmes, on transition plans as well as continuity of management at the store in Leadville and um, anticipates a successful relaunch of the store as a Sun Theory store following the close of this presentation. I did inquire of Mister Omen regarding fingerprints. Um, he's informed me that they have been submitted. I did see that uh line item in the agenda packet and I will be following up with him and Deputy Clerk, uh, Shear regarding that item, just to be sure the city has everything it needs to process the change of ownership. Uh, other than that, uh, we've submitted comprehensive security plans, inventory management plans. The floor plans of the store are not anticipated to change. Uh, there is an existing security system, um, internal and external cameras as required by the marijuana code. Um, the applicant is familiar with the security at the premises and uh anticipates a successful opening and uh con- conduct of the store in Leadville.
All right, uh, this time I would like to open the public input portion of this public hearing. Are there any, um, attendees who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, any, uh, any public presence that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none, I uh would request a motion to close the public input portion.
Moving on, who wants to close this, the public input portion of this public hearing?
Loretson, second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thanks, Rebecca. Any opposed? Any intentions? All right, now let's, um, let's open this up for discussion. Or any questions?
Uh, there's a fingerprint portion that need to go through for approval of?
So we discussed this, um, both, uh, Ms. Shear and I discussed it when we discussed it today in our agenda prep meeting. I see no issue with you approving a contention on receipt of the fingerprints. And then that means that the, you know, the applicant understands what the process is, will get the fingerprints and then it would be approved.
But, um, Mister Wonder, you indicated that the, that at the state level, the sale had already been approved. Doesn't the state require?
It does. The state has current fingerprints from all of the registered owners of Sun Theory. And so you, you can see in the agenda packet, there's three individuals, Connor Omen, uh, Mark Adams and John Constantine. All three of them have current fingerprints on file with the state. Um, and I'm not sure exactly what happened with the fingerprints. This is a part of a multi-part transaction. You can see in the application packet, there was a master acquisition agreement. There's multiple assets and so uh, my client's been sending fingerprints to various local licensing authorities like yourselves uh across the state. Uh, there was some kind of FedEx kerfuffle and I he, he seems to be under the impression that they were submitted. Um, getting them resubmitted if necessary is not an issue and, uh, you know, we're sorry for any confusion.
No, it just, that's, um, thank you. That clarifies a lot. Any, any other discussions or questions?
So we just say that i- in the motion, you would just add that additional language as whoever reads the, the motion.
All right. If there's no additional questions or discussion, then, um, I'll, I'll take a motion.
Will be an application for a transfer of ownership of Roots RX from Robert Holmes Jr. Is Sun Theory SPV two LLC. Also known as ST Leadville LLC deviated Sun Theory contingent on, I think, we see from Mr. Carter.
Or else on the side. Can further? All right. Council member Thomas?
Yes.
Council member Loretson?
Yes.
Mayor President Green?
Yes.
Council member Lalea?
Yes.
Council member Hill?
Yeah.
And council member Grant and Mayor Oviedo. Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, uh, this public hearing is closed. Moving on. We have an ordinance amending our section two regarding the compensation of the mayor. Um, we have had this discussion going on for a very long time. Um, we're gonna let Lori summarize this tightly for us. Um, but basically I think what our goal here tonight is to actually decide on, on votes. Right, take it away.
Absolutely correct. Uh, so Mayor President Green is correct. This is the ordinance that the council requested we bring back to you. We had two prior discussions about affixing the mayor salary that was on, um, let's see, June, May second and June sixth. And at the last meeting, council directed staff to come back with an, a proposed ordinance. So that's what this is. Um, the current salary is set at thirty thousand dollars annually. Just to refresh everybody's recollection, we had some, you know, pretty extensive discussions about uh, what that salary should be. The general consensus is that it should go up. Uh, but the question is how much? You know, I think the discussion centered around how much time, but, you know, I think the discussions were somewhere between halftime and three quarters time and full time is, is the position. I was trying to refresh my memory. I do believe that, and I can look it up, that, that the mayor did some cost of living calculations and if we did a cost of living for the eight years that the mayor was in the office, we in, was in office, we'd be looking at about forty three thousand dollars annually. And that is how much the cost of living would have gone up since he started as the salary has not got, gone up since he started. So I think that's where we are is the ordinance is before you to increase the salary. The question is all up to you all as to how much.
Question?
When we put an ordinance of salary plus a cost of living increase?
Sure. Well, you would probably be best to specify, because if we i- i- it might be best to do it, you know, along lines of, you know, should there be a cost of living increase made to uh city staff, that it would be in line with that.
Well.
Cause then we wouldn't have to do the calculations later again.
Legally speaking, is there an issue with that? I thought that we could raise wages while someone was in. Legally speaking, is there an issue with that? I thought that we could raise wages while someone was in, see if it'll make through.
Well, yeah, that's a good question because the, the issue is, are you? Well, not actually, that's a good question because if you put it in the code, are you actually increasing? Because if you put it, you can't increase it over what it is in code.
Right.
So if you put the possible increase in code, is it actually an increase and? Evan is taking herself off mute, so Evan, uh, I, this is a, this is kind of a stumper. Do you know the answer to this one?
Yeah, so a couple of our clients have stuff like it is written in the code. It's not necessarily cost of living, but I've seen, actually no. It would be cost of living, um, I know the city of Golden has something like that in their code and they just changed it. Um, so they have language that's like, um, it's going to be adjusted based on some kind of standard. Um, so yeah, there is a way that we can do it, um, we can, we can, and obviously this is first reading, so for second reading, we can have the language be all pretty. But if that's what council wants, we can do something in the code that will allow for it, that would not be a. Voting for your own increase kind of thing, which is what we want to avoid, so long story short, we can put something in the code. That can adjust automatically for cost of living, um, adjustments.
I have kind of a related question and that just comes from our, our actual code, which says that. Here's the mayor's salary, provided however, that if the city employs a professional city manager, the mayor's compensation shall be the annual sum of four thousand eight hundred dollars in accordance with the restraints. Imposed by a state statute, so my question is, you know, we're a statutory city and I think Golden is a home rule. I looked at the state statutes regarding municipal government and. Compensation and I, it looked pretty clear that city council could just. Determine the mayor's salary was going to be, do you neglect state statute, this particular, the two point oh four point oh three oh refers to?
I looked at it, I looked at it too and I honestly could not understand that as well, um, I did think that was a weird citation. Um, so no, I would have to do some more investigation. You're right, you guys are statutory. I still think you can put something in your code that allows for automatic adjustments. But let me do a little bit more research for second reading, as long as you guys have like, if council gives. You know, the consensus that this is what you want in your ordinance, I can run, I can run with it and have something for second reading. And I'll also have an answer for you on that statute and where that comes from and why, why it's in there maybe.
Yeah, or I, I was referring to Title thirty-one of the state statutes, like if, if there is nothing to be found perhaps in a second reading, we could strike that confusion piece as well since. It's the same section of our code.
Y- yeah, Evan had flagged that and, and when she drafted this ordinance and flagged it and. My interpretation was that it was technically a city manager and you were talking about home rule situation as opposed to statutory with the city administrator. Because then it's very clear, because the city is transitioning from a strong mayor to a weak mayor system, but when you do that, it is, it is. So that was my interpretation while I was there, but I don't know if that's what the drafter in this code meant.
And I know, you know, we had talked about that, but then I was thinking, I was like, wait, but if you're a home rule. You know, then there's not many state statutes that you can like write wrong stuff.
Yeah.
And so with that, why would that suddenly be a limitation?
So it's probably not a bad idea if it doesn't, it is not a productive citation and reference, but it should just be, we shouldn't refer to it.
Okay. Well, I think if we can have the flexibility to pack in. Cost of living of, of allowances similar to whatever it's worth. We typically went able. Do that along with, with the staff of the city. It would seem reasonable to use that same number added onto a mayor's salary.
Yeah, and it's a lot more efficient because then we wouldn't lose track.
Right.
Right, because if we set, you know, in a certain percentage in this, this code, I know what happens. We, we, we forget that it's there. And then, you know, we're like, what, we, you know, and so especially with different percentage, if we, if we fix a percentage in the code, then, you know, we're stuck with it. If we make it flexible, so something perhaps along the lines that would say, you know, um. The mayor shall receive any cost of living increase, um, that council determines to provide to city staff, something along those lines.
Yeah. Um, I know previously, you know, we had talked about just continuing the thirty thousand, I, I find it. We had not talked about the cost of living or the difference in time between when the mayor started at this salary versus now, um. What are council's thoughts on? Um, like, cause I know originally we had rejected fifty thousand, but here we are. Hearing from the mayor's calculations that forty-three eight, I think is what you said. Um, would be the time adjusted. The value of the thirty thousand a year, what are council's thoughts on this potential increase?
You know, from a layman's point of view, it's not really an increase, it's just maintaining, no.
Trending well.
Uh, a level, right, of thirty thousand just adjusted for inflation or cost of living or whatever it may be. Uh, we're looking at A M I numbers, eighty percent A M I is forty-six thousand, so it's still even. Yeah, still even under eighty percent A M I, uh, which for a part-time job makes total sense. Um. I, I think forty-three sounds reasonable. I was happy with forty, forty-three, maybe. We cut the difference and say forty just to make a nice number and. Include the.
And I have a point of order. I just found the mayor's email and I'm, I misspoke. It is forty thousand three hundred per year was his calculation.
Jumped right on.
Okay, so there, there's what it was. I knew I had a four and a three and I just got it wrong for sure. So forty thousand three hundred, it was his calculation.
You know, I, and I think along with this, I know to add, promise Laurie, I would take it to the discussion of the numbers, um, but. Like Chris has referenced, you know, we've been viewing this as a weak mayor and, uh, uh, a part-time position or code. Out, you know, both puts the mayor as essentially your job, the, the CEO who oversees all the departments and then just a bunch of emergency functions, so without. The managerial aspect, um. You know, I think it really does fall into what the individual, the future mayor wants to make it. Um, because it seems very silly to sit around and just wait to be able to declare a disaster. Get, appoint emergency deputies. But I don't know if we, at some future date, want to talk about the, what our actual expectations of the mayor duties are. Just gonna throw that out there.
And, and you know, we touched on that just a little bit with the committee assignments, but I think you're right, you probably need a bigger discussion, but we did, you know, we did have a discussion and that's. In part, we're lucky to have such a good mayor who wants to attend all those board meetings and. You know, there are some that the mayors, the cities does need to, but there are others that he attends just for informational purposes.
Well, okay, well, at the end of the day, I think what we can do is set someone up for success. And say, look, got to, this is what we can give you, please succeed with it, because obviously we can't force someone to succeed who's in life official. And I think this would allow a part-time person to succeed with flexible other part-time position, given the benefits and other such things. And it's flexible enough to, someone potentially actually live here, especially their partner who also has income. Plus if they're single, but I think that's fine, um. Uh, I mean, I think forty is reasonable with the living wage adjustment.
All set. Tim, do you have any comments?
I'll go forty.
Casey?
Uh, I prefer fifteen, I don't think that's a cost of looking at that, and I'll agree with the point.
Councilmember Thomas?
Uh, forty seems reasonable.
Okay, well, it seems like we have a consensus, um, Laurie, do you, in our motion, do we need to list the number and the, uh, addition of? Cost of living, um, language to be determined by? Or can we just, well, put that as direction?
Yeah, so this is just that first reading, so, uh. So you're, you're, I just had to pull up the proposed motion, um, right, so you're approving the ordinance, uh. Essentially in, you know, as, as reference ordinance or a course series of twenty twenty-three and ordinance amending section two. Point four oh three oh, the Leadville Municipal Code concerning the compensation of the mayor, so that's the motion, so I think once we get to second reading, we just have it all included, then you can.
And that's a motion plus instructions. I could mention.
Uh, I mean, it's nice to say that you're going to include that because it created a record for us, um, so I think that that's. Perfectly fine to include in the motion is that on first reading, we, you know, we agree with the language of the ordinance, given. That it would be forty thousand dollars annually with language to the extent that there's, if there's a cost of living provided to staff, shall be provided to the mayor, something along those lines. We just need to get enough direct and then come back.
Yeah, I'm sure. Okay. Alright. I would entertain a motion in that case.
Well, then that goes to approve ordinance in the fourth series of twenty twenty-three and ordinance amending section two point four oh point zero four zero.
Zero three zero?
Zero three zero of the Leadville Municipal Code concerning the compensation of the mayor on first reading starting at forty thousand dollars with. Uh. A cost of living adjustment done by city council to staff increase applying to the mayor's.
Records it done.
Rats and second. Okay. Any further discussion?
Or something like.
You know what to do. Um, excellent, swift and efficient job. Roll call, please. Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Parton Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Lynn Ellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Okay. Well.
Strong work.
That was a. That's been a few months coming. Well done. Okay, now let's move on to public comments. Yes, Steve.
Thank you. Fair to call. Um. Again, thanks to councilmembers Grant and Green for inviting me and reading public comments. Um, and also thanks for. Councilwoman Grant considering the collaboration, I mean, the pledge of allegiance issue. At this meeting. Um, I want to thanks for the notes taken, I, I, this was a contentious thing with Mister Swire because. He took copious notes on the whole proceedings and, uh, members of council objected that. Um, I think as a prophylactic measure, so it would not be a life of loss group. Um. I, I, uh. I'd like to clarify that, uh, cause I know this is a hard job, that, um, the information that I stated about the railing yard was unconfirmed, it was what I heard from the contractor. Um, but I, I was hoping that we could change our ordinance to, and that went, one minute went by. Uh, to make, uh, the, uh, copies of the D V D of the meetings, uh, make several copies and. Um, have those as a permanent record also, not as a thing, the only permanent record that I read, as I know that we have is the, uh. Uh, Venice, Venice somewhere we have like, where they were. Remember how the copious you made notes? Um. And we used to have state statutes available here. For some reason, they've been, or they're, they're still there and, and I don't remember where I'm sitting, so it's good that we have those referred to. Uh, looks like I'm close to, I think one more minute after this, the minute ten thirty. Um. You know, I have a bunch of things to say and I just don't have it down here to move in me. Um. I, I think, uh, one of the things that I objected to in the meetings is the term community. Um. Because the confidence in plan really failed, the last one to define what her community was. And even with this, uh. Motion about the, uh. The pay of the mayor, there's a, the, the gentrification thing about, uh, making this a. More private development is, is strong area, we made our considerations. Um. So I guess that's all the time I have, so thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Steve. Remember those other comments for our next meeting in two weeks.
I will say that, are you sure we have a YouTube? Channel, right, where we have our recording of?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you can always find those online.
Okay.
Not always. And you ain't got that anymore.
Public meeting planner. Call the cab. When did we add those work sessions?
Us. We added a work sessions for September twelve.
Yes.
In that, hold on, just, I just closed out the worksheet for that. Yeah, so the work session on September twelfth is a housing variety work session. And then the other one is on nine twenty-nine, the short-term rental cap.
Nine twenty-nine?
About five, twelve.
Twelve of, yeah, for rental.
Obviously.
Twenty-nine puts our housing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's one that.
Oh, you're right.
Chapin is taking the planning zoning to propose that date to them, so that's probably.
Yeah.
Probably.
The joint meetings twenty-nine and the severance at twelve.
Yep, okay, thank you. He's put it in the wrong place.
Um, the only other thing I would add is that in the U R A board, we are gonna go to every other month. Um, after August, so we don't have a meeting in September, correct?
I think so, yeah.
That's, that's what my candidate.
From where else? And I wonder if we could add the regional housing authority meetings on here, cause that might never remember. That gets me the idea.
It's next regional one, housing authority meeting, and it is at the usual five thirty at your library.
Oh, the third ones.
Yes, third Wednesday of every month is, uh, that will like coming region housing authority. Uh. With very. I would also point out the third panel is bi-monthly right now. So we know third panel meeting in August.
For the odd months.
What day is that on?
Um.
The fifteen.
It's like the third Tuesday. Okay, any other, uh, corrections for the public meetings? Alright, wrapping this up, the mayor, the black mayor is not here. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I'm pretty sure he was, would say something along the lines of. Come to the play, Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, seven, ten, it's gonna be amazing. So, uh. Uh, any counsel reports?
Um, yes, um, already somewhat talking about horrible housing, the units change. Um, but another subject, uh, that's been around, that maybe we could tell on that already established work session, um. Is, uh, landmine, uh, this is useful for one, just for the housing, but from a housing perspective, as someone who does, uh, primarily housework around the community. Uh, given that we are no longer going to be facing the donation of, um. The climax parcels, uh, to the city or the Lake County Regional, I was, Lake County Regional Housing Authority. Uh, we will obviously be very down on land. We're not gonna have those twelve-ish acres or seven acres, I forget how much it was. To rely on, that was a huge help for us for things in the future, such as flight tech or any of those big, big developments. So I think it's important that we start seriously sitting down and talk about like, alright, we need to look at how much land we have, we need to look at what type of land we need. And if we're seriously considering building as a part of the solution towards a housing crisis, then we seriously need to consider where. And landmaking is a perfect opportunity for that. It's not getting involved in the real estate industry, there's. Multi-purpose to landmaking, uh, obviously we are overdue for a, um, city assessment to see where we're at, um, in terms of. Who needs space where? Who needs space where, and given especially the, you know, subject justice centers kind of in flux. And all these other developments are in flux, I think it's more important than ever to start planning ahead of time. Start making some land in places that seem appropriate for us. And could be seen as potential sites for any of the services that we provide or especially any of the housing that could be used by residential. Employees to just people that live in the community, so. I hope that that is something that we would be able to add to our next work session. I know that it's gonna be, we are gonna have a conversation at the end of August, our end of August meeting in terms of housing. But having a more in-depth conversation about that and what that looks like would be very important, in my opinion.
Does the loss of the climax parcel endanger the grant?
Enganger?
Uh, no, that's completely separate, luckily, we're really belonging. On the climax, that being said, we are kind of figuring out where we're gonna have that great place, just because of the myriad. So many issues that came up with the current places that we've looked at different parcels. Luckily, we got an extension for a year, so we have some time to manage, but. Jackie said, there's a lot of balls up in the air right now, and there's a lot to do, so. That being one of the, we want to have a successful. Right usage, to put that infrastructure down, that'd be an enormous amount of help for our community. And will help bring down the cost for the GAD funding in the future.
I know, way, way back before the the regional housing authority was. In place, their order for grad students from Denver came up as part of their capstone to identify different places, the climax parcel was one of them. Another one is not city, but like up by the ball field.
Yeah.
Is that?
That was in consideration, there's some issues that will make it infeasible for this project. But it's not out of consideration for the future projects. And the original land that we landed on, same thing, basically. So we'll be looking at. Other lands. I'm sure we'll find something that will work for us, the state has been very generous in. Allowing us to kind of figure this one out, they have strong belief in us that we'll figure it out, so we don't.
Would Chapin be an appropriate person who would have knowledge of, like, city lots that, like, I don't think the city owns?
He is sitting on our development subcommittee, so he's involved in the process.
And remember when we were talking about Turkey last year, and the mayor identified that lots. Off of Monroe. Where they kind of wanted to build a brick factory.
Oh, yeah.
That, that's.
We, let's talk about that, let's talk about that. Yes.
That's a hard to personalize, and by the way, climax.
Yeah.
So. Hope we consider it. Housing Coalition is moving forward with their door, as usual, we are planning for the future. And we are kind of shifting gears towards more of a activist role, so to say, and. Take on more of that, and instead of providing the admin work for the. Housing of our community that would be provided hopefully by the Lake County let built regional housing authority. It's. The PAT is one of, obviously, the advocacy portions of it, but at large, there are many, many things that we can consider going forward. And there are many, many solutions that need to be implemented for housing, there is no one silver bullet. It has to go along with rebuilding old infrastructure that's dilapidated. It has to go along with all these other events, or all these other considerations, you know, new funding for the LLC RHA. And so on and so on, so luckily, we're considering what our focus is gonna be, we're hoping to narrow that down a bit and in our next meetings. And really pinpoint what's gonna be the focus, we'll do some heavy research. Deed restrictions is obviously still on the table, I know we're doing some deed restrictions, like we're incentive based deed restrictions here. At the city, but in general, focusing on. What's gonna work for our community and how can we really make that work, there's a lot of experts in that. Coalition, there's a lot of good people to, with a lot of insight from different aspects of it. So, I mean, it doesn't get better than that, and I've been in this, full of people with lived experience and quite little. Built experience. So. I hope that we continue to work with them as we have recently. To get this housing deemed so. And that's it.
Surely, there's a meme out there that, with all the impossible balls in the air, that we could label the housing authority. All right, any other council reports? All right, and this, any council meeting? Thank you, guys, for your support and help. So, you're faster.
My next.
Good night.
Good night.